Welcome to the September 18th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Bill Twist, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we have the opportunity to live in this great country. We just thank you that we can live in this city that is concerned about its citizens and our young adults growing up, Lord. We just ask a special blessing on this evening that you would guide us and direct us for what's best for the city. We thank you to all those that serve, in emergency, police, firefighters, and those that are serving our country. We thank you for them, and we ask a special blessing on them. In your name, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath.
Here.
Mrs. Snee.
Here.
Mr. Swazer.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Kendall.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mrs. Oda.
Here.
Mr. Tremblay.
Here.
All members are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read the summary of the minutes of the September 5th meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council Tuesday, September 5. Committee reports, there was an oral report regarding the workshop held on August 21st. There were no resolutions or ordinances following various comments. Council adjourned at 7:40.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Madam President, oh, I see it, never mind.
Make a motion to accept the minutes then.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We begin with our committee reports. The Community and Economic Development Committee has the report this evening. Chairman, Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on September 14th to consider the petition filed on behalf of Barbara Ernst Wilson and John A. Wilson for the annexation of 33.3712 acres from Concord Township. This property is located on Washington Road, based on the state law section under which the annexation petition was filed and qualifies. There's a very short timeline for the council to consider three separate pieces of legislation addressing what services the municipal corporation would provide to any parcel within the city, including the proposed for annexation, a statement of buffering requirements, and legislation consenting or objecting to the annexation. It is this recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by the state law related to the Wilson annexation of 33.3712 acres from Concord Township to meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation. We do support emergency legislation. That's respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, Bill Twist.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The Finance Committee has a couple of reports tonight. Chairman, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee members Kendall and Tremblay met on September 5th to review the certification forwarded, accepted by the Miami County Budget Commission for the rates of tax to be levied on the general duplicates for 2017 for collection in 2018. The certifications are to be based on the city's tax budget, which Council approved earlier this year. The certifications are provided geographically by school district. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the tax levies for the city of Troy as certified by the Miami County Budget Commission. We also support emergency legislation to meet the October 1st date by which acceptance of the certifications are to be returned to the county. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from Council? You may continue.
Okay, thank you. This committee met on September 14th to consider a recommendation from the Loan Review Committee to approve the assignment of the 2007 CDBG loan to Medallion Investments LLC to Steve Smith and Melanie Elsass Smith. The 2007 loan was for the purchase and renovation of the DI building. The outstanding principal balance is $296,096.32. The Smiths would assume the loan with some modification of the conditions to lengthen the repayment terms. At the time of the closing, the city would be paid all late penalties due, and no city funds would be lost with the assignment of the loan. We view the information discussed in the detailed report. It is a recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee, that the 2007 CDBG loan to Medallion Investments LLC be assigned to Steve Smith and Melanie Elsass Smith, in that the council approves a modification of the terms of the 2007 loan to lengthen the time for the repayments of the loan. In that the Smiths intend to close on loan on October 4th, 2017, committee supports emergency legislation. And this too is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Tremblay, and myself as Chair.
Are there any comments or questions from Council? Do you have anything further, Mr. Kendall?
No, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we have Streets and Sidewalks Committee and Chairman, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to thank the volunteers, the Assessment Equalization Board of Renee Gummerlock, Roberta Jacobs, and William Rosell for taking the time to volunteer to hear the seven appellants on this matter. So thank them, I do thank them for their time. The committee met on September 14th to consider the recommendation of the Assessment Equalization Board related to appeals to the estimated assessments for the sidewalk portion of the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase II. The AEB supported the recommendation of city staff that the work be assessed as if this was a standard sidewalk program and a total road reconstruction project for these properties for which appeals were filed. For nine of the 10 properties for which appeals were filed, the recalculated assessments were reduced from that initially provided to property owners. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the recommendation of the Assessment Equalization Board, associated with the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase II, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Snee, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from Council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Are there any further reports from any committees? At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. This is referenced to any agenda items this evening. Seeing none, then we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R. 39, 2017.
Resolution number R. 39, 2017, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Miami County Public Defenders Commission for 2018. This is an annual agreement, cost not to exceed $20,341.13. It is no increase over the prior year. First reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 40, 2017.
Resolution number R. 40, 2017, resolution authorizing tax levies for the city of Troy, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, as determined by the Budget Commission, and certifying such levies to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. This is based on the city's tax budget that was submitted to the county. This must be filed back, acceptance with the county prior, no later than October 1, and it covers the geographic areas of Troy School District and Miami East School District. First reading.
Are there any comments or questions from Council?
I move to suspend the rules. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Tremblay and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
I'll move to adopt. Second.
I didn't catch who the second you were.
Sure.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 41, 2017.
Resolution number R. 41, 2017, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 33.3712 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the Wilson annexation located on Washington Road, filed under Type 2 expedited. The city has only 20 days after it is filed to provide this statement to the county. First reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 42, 2017.
Resolution number R. 42, 2017, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 33.3712 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is also the Wilson annexation on Washington Road, again with a timeline to be filed with the county within 20 days of receipt. First reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mrs. Snee to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mrs. Snee to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 43, 2017.
Resolution number R. 43, 2017, resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 33.3712 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is also the Wilson annexation on Washington Road, the third piece of legislation that must be filed with the county. First reading.
Any questions or comments from Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Okay, it's been moved, we got two. Okay, I'll second it. It's been moved by Mrs. Snee and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
I'll move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 45, 2017.
Resolution number R. 45, 2017, resolution approving the amendment and assignment to Steve Smith and Melanie Elsass Smith of a loan from the CDBG Revolving Loan Fund to Medallion Investments LLC and declaring an emergency. This assigns the loan that was approved in 2007, recommended by the Loan Review Committee for the DI building, and this is the first reading.
Are there any questions from Council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Oda to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Swazer.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We have just one ordinance this evening. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 24, 2017.
Order number O. 24, 2017, ordinance changing the zoning of parcel D.08040730 in lot 4073 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R.4 Single Family Residential District to OR.1 Office Residential District. This is the address of 93 Robin Hood Lane. The rezoning has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. There will be a public hearing at the next meeting.
This, then, will go to a second reading. That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
Yes, there are. Last week, the county returned to the city the Strayer Annexation, the small lot on McHague Road. This will now stay with the city for a period of 60 days while no action can be taken following that time period. There's another 60-day period for which council will do the final acceptance, that is to provide notice of the annexation return to the city.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments this evening?
I just mentioned that there is a heroin and opiate awareness week taking place at the Miami County Public Library. They asked me to speak today on the prevention and educational piece, which I felt that I shared that council was supportive of our QRT, and it went well. There's two more nights being planned, tomorrow night and Wednesday night, 6 to 8, if someone would be interested in listening to the discussion that's taking place at the library. Just I bring that up. And then, again, to go along with that piece is Part B, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be October 14th, and that, again, will have a panel talking about the responsibilities of each member of the QRT. So that will also be part of that Mayor's Prayer Breakfast down the road. So we are looking at seriously trying to make a dent in this epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of brief things, some more dates to keep in mind. First of all, as was reported in your items of interest, we anticipate that leaf pickup will start October 2nd. Believe it or not, it's that time of the year again. We don't anticipate being able to start earlier because we're finishing up with some of our summer work, which includes some of the more mild weather and the continued grass maintenance that we're doing. So please keep October 2nd in mind. Again, weather permitting, we will start the annual program. The second item is Trick or Treat is also right around the corner, October 31st, Tuesday. That will be from 6 to 8 o'clock in the community. And we have and will continue to post both those items on our social media and website. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
Madam President, I have nothing to offer this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggi.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Just a reminder that there is a council workshop session tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock at the Bravo Room of Hobart Arena to hear the details of the downtown parking and traffic assessment study, and this is open to the public. Are there any comments from council members this evening? Anyone? Any comments from city staff? Anyone in the audience have any comments this evening? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Brian Kemper, 1013 South Crawford. Have a few things tonight. First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for acknowledging the heroin epidemic. As somebody who has 30 years and two months clean off meth, I'm very excited for that. However, it kind of boggles my mind sometimes, the fact that most people in town know the house on McHague next to the old church is a heroin house, and my kids have watched four bodies dragged out of that house, four different times, yet no arrests were made at that house. So if we want to talk about serious awareness, when most people know where heroin's being sold, something should be done about it. But, you know, a couple of things that have been bothering me, and it's about perceived hypocrisy in this town by a lot of people, by city council. I, as everyone know, did the hydrophobic, super hydrophobic coating on the sidewalk, and it was argued by this city council that it should be illegal because it was dangerous, because it might be slippery when wet. That was the argument made. Yet, when the Pee-wee Herman movie came to town, some sort of almost semi-permanent chalk that could not be washed away by brush and water, I tried for an hour, was allowed to be put on bicycle lanes and sidewalks. Now, if it's supposed to be slippery when wet, then why would we put it on a bicycle lane? That makes no sense to me whatsoever. And if you guys are passing a law saying we can't do this, yet you guys can do it, or the city can do it, or people in the city can do it, that's absolutely hypocrisy, and it's wrong. If I can't do it, and you have to make a special exception for the strawberries in the street, then other people shouldn't be allowed to do it either. That chalk was slippery when wet on a bicycle lane. It was wrong to be put there. And if you're going to pass laws against me doing it, it has to be for everybody in this town. It has to be for everyone to follow that law. And that's a simple thing. And I read that they want the bicycles to come back to Troy, like the event we had. Well, then, absolutely strawberries cannot be painted in the street anymore. Strawberries are painted with paint, which is very slippery when wet. So if we're going to want these bicycles riding downtown, what if they get wet? What if one of these bicyclists slips on those strawberries? Let's look at the reason why you passed that law and be consistent all the way through. That's what it is your job to do, to be consistent on that. So if you're going to say super hydrophobic coating, which we know is not slippery, it's actually the opposite, is illegal because it might be a danger, then those strawberries in the streets for bicycles are a danger, and they should not be allowed. It's absolutely hypocrisy. I really don't understand why you guys can't see that. Another thing, if bicycles, which I think is a great thing, are being promoted as an alternative form of transportation. Last year, I was pulled over for riding a longboard, a very long skateboard, in the street, following traffic laws, stopping at the stoplights, stopping at the stop signs. I was cited for a toy vehicle violation. Ohio, the state of Ohio, describes a toy vehicle as a vehicle solely made for use by play by a child. That's not what my longboard is. In fact, the day I was cited, our wonderful mayor, Mayor Beamish, looked at me when I was riding my longboard and said, hey, Brian, that's a great thing. I need to get myself one of those. Do you remember that, Mayor Beamish?
No, I don't.
Well, you did. You did. You saw me riding it, you thought it was great, and you told me you should get yourself one of those. The way our law is written right now, actually, it says that Troy has redefined toy vehicles to any vehicle pushed by man with wheels under 14 inches in diameter. So right now, in the city of Troy, all strollers, and it includes wagons, sleds, are illegal on downtown sidewalks in Troy, Ohio. That's what the law says. All strollers, anything with wheels under 14 diameters, that's not a bicycle, are illegal on downtown sidewalks in Troy. So at bare minimum, the law has to be rewritten, unless Mr. Titterington, as he stated on Facebook, wants me to sit downtown and call 911 for every traffic violation I see, which I still think Mr. Titterington should address, because I think that was a very irresponsible statement to make on Facebook, to tell people to call 911 for every little violation they see. But I think the city of Troy needs to look at the way the laws are written. Right now, it's against the law for a stroller or a wagon to be pulled downtown on the sidewalks. The law states that skateboards and longboards and rollerblades can't be used anywhere, anywhere. Rollerblades, longboards, skateboards are very viable alternative transportation. If we are following the laws, if I am stopping at a stop sign, signaling a turn, stopping at a stoplight, I'm from California. I rode longboards and skateboards all my life, and, in fact, many cities, including Cleveland, Ohio, have amended their laws to allow them, as long as you follow the traffic laws. So if we're going to be pushing for bicyclists, which I think is a fine thing, and for alternative transportation, I'm asking, would anybody here be willing to relook at that law? Now, I understand we shouldn't be riding skateboards and grinding on people's property, which was done in the past, and that's why those laws were originally written. But for someone who wants to ride rollerblades and follow the traffic laws, someone who wants to ride a longboard and follow the traffic laws in this city, on the streets, just like a bicyclist should, I think that should be looked at as a viable form of alternate transportation. I'm asking, is there anybody in city council willing to at least look at that and at least consider that?
I think, yes, we'll be glad to look at it and see what it says and see how, you know.
Not just what it says, but the fact that in today's day and age, those forms of transportation are legitimate alternative transportation. Are they not? A lot of people use rollerblades, a lot of people use skateboards and such. I love using my longboard. I will follow traffic laws. I expect to be stopped if I run a red light. I was not stopped for that. I was stopped because I was told I was riding a toy. It's not a toy. And again, the way our laws are written and that stuff, as, you know, according to Mr. Titterington, who can't even look at me, it seems, you wrote on Facebook, we should call, we should call 911 for every violation seen. Is that something you really believe, Mr. Titterington? I think the community wants to know. I mean, you put it on Facebook, you're not willing to answer to it?[1762.71]